Sheila, can you hear us?
I can.
All right, thank you very much. The time is 7:01 PM and I will call this meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Riechel?
Here.
Pro Tim Hennerhan?
Here.
Trustee Britnall?
Here.
Trustee Klassen?
Here.
Trustee Flores?
Here.
Trustee Poston? Trustee Seifert?
Here.
May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. All right, first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make public comments on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Sheila, do we have any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items for public comment?
No, I have not heard from anyone today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do we have any hands?
I don't show any raised hands.
Okay, thank you very much.
No. You're here.
All right. We do have some people signed in here in the chambers with us tonight.
We have two, Mr. Mayor, signed in.
All right. Who's the first one?
Mary Rose.
Mary Rose, okay. Good evening, Mary.
I'm Mary Rose. I know most of you guys.
I think I know you too, Mary.
Okay, so first I would like to thank the town for saving the gazebo at Veterans Park. About this time last year, I submitted a petition with 59 signatures asking to not tear down the gazebo with wood estimates from Lowe's to make repairs to the decking and replace the stairs for about 1,500, using the town maintenance crew for the labor. The gazebo had been neglected and not maintained for quite a while. I was pleased to see repairs were made to the wood deck and steps, as well as completely a new paint job. It looks great and is safe again. A few people use the stairs as part of their morning exercise, getting their steps in, going up to the deck and back down. It could also be a great spot for morning yoga. When the farmer's market first began early summer, a couple bands played up there and the acoustics were wonderful, projecting the music across the park but not too loud, just right. And the band could be seen from all areas of the park. Your event coordinator began to discourage entertainment from using the gazebo by prefacing the option, "If you don't want to lug your equipment up the stairs, you can set up at the bottom of the stairs on the concrete." The gazebo was always meant to be a stage in all of my 30 years living here. One band told me they really liked the view from up there and seeing the people and the sound of the wooden cone-shaped ceiling was excellent. The problem with bands playing below on the concrete is it's hard to visit with friends and have conversation because the music is too close and loud near the picnic tables. Now I see a concrete square pad has been poured at the northeast corner supposedly for more picnic tables. I fear the town is going to tear down our existing gazebo after the money was spent to repair it and build a new one on considerable cost on the new pad. I understand after money was spent, maybe we shouldn't spend more if they do tear down the old gazebo and make a new one. I've been told it's going to be more picnic tables, but I don't know. I understand Grand Avenue would be paved, repaved this summer and for some reason, the only street repaved two summers ago was Home Avenue. I hope that we keep our budget low and use money to pave Grand Avenue like I thought would happen this summer. The gazebo was saved, but the farmer's market has been dismal this summer. Very few vendors, no food trucks, and low attendance. Perhaps the music down on the cement area doesn't seem very festive and dance area is taken up by the band. If it starts to rain, the band equipment is not protected, whereas up under the roof of the gazebo it is. I would ask that the last two bands entertain from up on the deck. Musicians are used to setting up and carrying their equipment. Maybe a maintenance guy could lend a hand or perhaps Nicole, the events coordinator, could organize that. I also think to complete the paved circle around the park would benefit dog walkers, paving from where the path ends along Grand by extending it along the north backside, connecting with where it ends along Home. I hope that the last couple farmer's markets, I think there's two, that will have the bands up in the gazebo. I don't know if anybody's been to the other farmer's markets, Rifle and Newcastle. Newcastle's jam-packed and it's well organized. The music's great. Rifle's totally packed, so I'm perplexed. The coordinator for Newcastle said she has extra vendors wanting a place to set up. She doesn't have room. So she said if she gets more requests, she'll refer them over to Silt. So I don't know if that will pan out or not. I like the history of the gazebo. I hope we keep it. And I don't know if I can get an answer tonight what the concrete pad is for.
Okay. We usually don't during board or during public comments reply, but that concrete pad, as far as I know, is going to be another picnic table that's going there. And I believe it's also going to be a covered.
Picnic shelter with.
With picnic shelter, so a covered picnic table is what's going on.
I believe it's large enough for four picnic tables.
Yeah, nice.
Yeah.
Our old one will remain then?
Yes.
And you're not going to tear the gazebo down?
There have been no discussions about tearing the gazebo down.
Hopefully you'll get behind me on having the band up there, the last two farmer's markets, because I think it just gives it more energy, you know? Maybe we can promote it more and drive some people to it, you know? Tell them to bring their own picnics or whatever.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for coming in.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mary.
Do I get to go home now?
You can if you'd like, or you can stay for the rest of the meeting if you want to.
I'm so nervous. Thanks for listening.
No, please feel free to come to any meeting you'd like to.
Well, I was told, I don't know if you want to be involved, come. Last time I came, it was about the ATVs. Unfortunately, now I've seen little tiny kids racing in the streets. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You guys too.
All right, and next up we have?
Hi, I am Peggy Swank. I live at 20 Lone Pinion in Silt, up on the Mesa. And I apologize, usually by this time I've been in and given a talk on what's happening with Silt heyday. This year, the summer's just sort of gotten away from me and I apologize for not getting back to. Thank you so much for the support that you've already given to us. A couple of your board members are on our committee and we also have Sheila as the representative too from the town. We are scheduled for August 19th at Veterans Park. We're honoring, I even put my T-shirt on this morning.
Oh, good.
Tonight, they came, the new T-shirts came in. We're honoring the 40th anniversary of the Silt Historical Park this year. So that's our focus. We do really appreciate the help and support we're getting. We're still looking for food and craft and booth vendors and parade entries. So if anybody's out there and listening to this, we are looking for vendors and parade entries at this point. Parade is free. You don't have to pay anything to be in it. Vendor booths are at a very nominal price. But it has been, as she said, it's been difficult to get vendors this year. Really difficult to get vendors. Our bands are lined up. We have the Colorado Currys, Feeding Giants, and Louie and the Lizards. They'll be at various times during the day. The Silt Historical Park is providing the breakfast. The prices are going to continue to be what they were last year. And I think, Chris, that's seven and $5?
Yes, you're correct.
Five for seniors and youth and seven for adults. New this year, the Rifle Recreation Department is sponsoring our cornhole tournaments. So we've got somebody other than Justin trying to put on both tournaments. The quilt show's going on at the Silt Historical Park. The vintage baseball game is scheduled to happen again. And we are looking forward to August 19th. Hopefully you guys are too. Okay? If you want additional information, either through Sheila or Justin or Chris, you can ask those questions and I can get back with you. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Peggy.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thanks, Peggy.
You're welcome. Have a good meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, gentlemen.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Can I ask you a question?
All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the July 10th, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting and Resolution Number 18, Series 2023, a resolution supporting the grant application for a Department of Local Affairs Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance Grant in the amount of $1 million for a total project cost of $25,627,869 in order to offset the costs associated with building a new water plant within the town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. Would anyone like to discuss those separately or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Seifert to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by trustee Klassen. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
Yes, sir.
Nothing?
Done for me. How about any agenda changes by the board or by staff?
Nothing here. Nope.
Okay. Staff, any agenda changes?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, then moving right along, our next item on the agenda is the second reading of Ordinance Number 3, Series 2023, An Ordinance of the Town of Silt, Colorado, Enacting a New Chapter 12.14 of the Silt Municipal Code to Allow the Town to Regulate and Review Requests for Closure of Public Right-of-Way for Construction Work That Requires a Partial or Complete Closure of Any Public Street, Road, Highway, Alley, or Sidewalk. And I will turn this over to Town Clerk McAtar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am your tray tonight, so I'm going to stand in for him while he's out tonight. So this ordinance came before your last meeting for first reading. Staff is asking to create a policy that will help address any road closures that may happen for any variety of reasons throughout town. So there haven't been any changes made since the first reading and staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, but any discussion by the board before we open up the public hearing?
I don't have anything.
No.
Okay. The time is 7:13 PM and I will open up the public hearing for the second reading of Ordinance Number 3, Series 2023. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, sir, none from me.
Okay.
And I have no raised hands.
All right. And everybody we had in the public with us has left the chamber, so we have no public comment here on this one either. So the time is 7:14 PM and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
I have a quick question. I don't know if Jeff or Sheila can answer this. Does this pertain also to, I know it says the town of Silt, for right-of-ways like along Highway 6? Or, you know, along that they'd have to get, have control of that? For a certain project that's going on Highway 6 right now? Do we have control over that or does this exempt from that?
There's a section on state highways there. I want to say that would be up to CDOT and it appears that it would be.
Yeah, but I just wanted to double check.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make, I just read that, but I was double checking, so, okay.
I would.
That's all I had.
I would assume though, since that's a sidewalk is on town property, and to close Highway 6 would be a CDOT thing, but that in relation to the sidewalk, the long Highway 6, that would be a town sidewalk, so that would.
It'd be a town sidewalk, yeah.
I believe this would.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the sidewalks are also part of the CDOT right-of-way.
Okay.
And Jeff can maybe correct me if I'm incorrect, if I'm wrong.
No, it's a great question and I'm hesitant to answer with any degree of authority, but I think that's probably right, that the sidewalks would be part of the right-of-way.
Would be part of the CDOT right-of-way, okay.
That was, that's kind of where my question was going with it, so, okay.
But I would, I would assume on that point that CDOT would have a procedure much more in-depth than what we have to close down any right-of-way that they have.
Right. And the work we're doing on Main Street right now is on a state. They were involved in that process.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So any further discussion or a motion?
Nope.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to state a motion of, or sorry, I'd like to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 3, Series 2023, An Ordinance of the Town of Silt, Colorado, Enacting a New Chapter 12.14 of the Silt Municipal Code to Allow the Town to Regulate and Review Requests for Closure of Public Rights-of-Way for Construction Work That Requires the Partial or Complete Closure of Any Public Street, Road, Highway, Alley, or Sidewalk.
Second.
Motion by trustee Klassen to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 3, Series 2023. That was seconded by trustee Seifert. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sheila, for that.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the June 2023 Financial Report and I will turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is for the month of June, which means 50% of the year has flown past us. We're doing well with our sales tax. We are about 10% up where we were last year at this time and we're at about 57% of what we had projected our goal to be for sales tax collection. Our use tax is at 61%, so we're doing well there. We're right on budget or on with trash service, wastewater, water and irrigation service fees. We are doing well with our revenues and again with our expenses, with the exception of the park impact and the construction impact funds. And those are funds that we're using for the parks. So those are one-time fees at this moment and we're going to build those funds back up before we pursue other projects with that money. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Amy, it actually looks like sales tax in June is down.
But for the year, from like last year, January to June, compared to this year, January to June, we're up 10%.
Statistics can be used to prove anything.
Do we know why June was down? Do we have, are there any delinquent businesses in town or just?
I checked the large businesses. Excuse me. Golden Gate, Come and Go, Dollar General, Miners' Claim, Amazon, even though they're not in town, but I checked the ones that are the larger dollar amounts and they all are current.
Okay.
Yeah, we get about 2,000 people that submit sales tax to us on a monthly basis. And sometimes it's, you know, nine cents. And sometimes it's, you know, 13,000 depending on the vendor.
The vendor, right. All right.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you very much, Treasurer Tucker.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Moving right along to Administrator and Staff comments.
I would just like to congratulate all those involved in that Energy Impact Assistance Fund Grant that we received, $750,000 bucks. And of course, that's $750,000 that the board will be able to use to put toward water because that was budgeted, so we can move that over and use it for something else. So good job all for that. I did want to, I'm assuming you received an email from Ann McCord regarding my performance evaluation. Wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
That wasn't spam?
That was not spam. Maybe.
Well, if it was spam, then well, oops.
Oops, yeah. You gave me my social security number, is that what you're saying? And then I wanted to just highlight one other item on my report is we met with CDOT and they're going to do all of the ramps this summer, rebuild all the ramps in the neighborhood, including ours this summer, a little bit later. I shouldn't say rebuild, they're going to resurface them. So I think, and where necessary, they'll go down and dig them out and resurface them, build them back up. So that should help on our, on ramps and off-ramps. Unbelievably though, the actual deck of the bridge was not included in that work. So we lobbied pretty hard to have that sort of reconsidered and we were told that they would. And remember, these guys are the engineers. They don't supervise the maintenance crew. Maintenance crew has minds of their own and, well, and to be fair, their own priorities. And so, but they said they would go back and lobby for us to see if we could get that done. We have some other lobbying efforts at other levels that we're trying, working a couple different directions on. So hopefully one of those will pay off and we'll actually get that done this summer. Fingers crossed. Any questions you have about anything else on my report or anything else at all?
Just that I'm pleased to see the RREDC getting involved directly with that Colorado River Valley Economic Development Group.
Right.
I know I spoke with Michael.
Langhorne.
Prior to it and they were debating whether or not to get engaged. I'm glad to see that they've chosen to. I think that's great.
Yeah, he's very excited about the prospect. He just wants RREDC to have a seat at the table and just be part of the process, but really just manage the finances at this point, the money, pay the bills and have some input.
That was great to read. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right. Any board members have any questions for staff?
I do not.
Okay, then we'll move on to updates from the board and board comments and we'll start with trustee Flores.
Jeff, thanks for the quick response for that dog attack.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yep, and that's about it.
Trustee Britnall?
Just things in the summertime, being aware of, obviously, kids out running around, town safety and stuff. One thing that I've kind of been made aware of or heard about here recently, rumors of, or however you want to look at it, of kids or young people going into people's vehicles and taking stuff. So make sure you lock your cars. Don't leave valuable stuff or dangerous items in your vehicles, especially unsecured, because kids will get hold of them and they'll do stupid stuff.
Okay. All right. Trustee Klassen?
I don't have anything other than, you know, that fire last week was awful close to town and I just didn't know if the town has all of their hydrants weeded around and painted and everything, just to make it easier for the fire department to, you know, locate them. So that was my only kind of comment. So keep up the good work, staff, and thank you all.
All right. Trustee Seifert?
Just a couple of things you heard, Peggy. Heydays is coming, so if you want to put anything in the parade, let her know. Coming up and also on that fire, just to piggyback on that being, if we'd had a westerly wind and would've got into K&amp;K lumber, we wouldn't have stopped until it got to the school, if that. So it's real important for people in town to make sure you keep your trees trimmed, your garbage from around your sheds, anything, because if wind blowing wouldn't have taken much, we wouldn't have stopped it. So it's just real important for people to make sure they keep their yards clean, dead trees pruned up and from around their sheds and stuff, because that's what starts the first, you get the wind blowing, the ashes, they'll get into your backyard by your used oil and tires and whatever. And like I say, they did a good job protecting it. And, but we didn't have much wind, but it was real close. It would've gotten K&amp;K. There's 20 feet of old oil and gas and sawdust in there. That wouldn't have stopped that till it, it'd have got into that subdivision and had to stop it by the coal ridge at about where it only would've stopped it, so. So I'm just, you know, just warning people just to make sure your yards are cleaned up and don't have anything that is combustible where a few ashes or sparks could start, because it won't take much in a wind. That's it.
Okay. Mayor Proton?
Just a brief reminder for people elected as well as citizens to go and check out the farmer's market. I've been trying to make a habit out of cruising over there for a little bit, probably co-opting too much of town staff's time, so I apologize. But it's also been a great chance of seeing people from P&amp;Z. I met the new executive director of the Chamber, Cassidy there. Had a great brief conversation with her. Jeff, thanks for the intro. Talking with townspeople, just finding out how are they doing, what's going on, shooting the breeze about any number of things, talking with the musicians. I think it's, for me at least, it's been a great opportunity to just kind of sit down with people and chat with them where they're at and enjoy the environment. You know, great foods there, great products there to get. I got some jellies, some bread. I think my daughter bought some jewelry, much to my chagrin. And I also met one group that I wanted to mention specifically because I was very impressed by them. It's the Parkinson Rockies Group. It's a group that assists people with Parkinson's disease and there were some members of the team as well as two older gentlemen that they were helping out. And they asked that I try to get the word out about an event that they have coming up and I told them I would. So they're having the first annual Roaring Fork Valley 5K Walk and Fun Run on September the 23rd, which is a Saturday, at Crown Mountain Park in Elgabelle. Sorry, I know I'm promoting an out-of-town event, but they're really good people that are doing great work and I wanted to make sure I noted it. It's also another reason to go there. I learned a lot about Parkinson's that I didn't know until I was able to walk up and chat with them. So it's, I think it's a great place to spend a little bit of time on a Wednesday night and I've really enjoyed it. That's it.
All right. Same thing, I hit the farmer's market a couple weeks ago. It was a great time. Dusty and Nicole and the whole town staff do a great job with that. You know, people always talk about it needs to be bigger, it needs to be better. Tell your neighbors, tell your friends, tell them what's there. Use your ability too in this town to help get other people there. We can, as a town, we can only do so much. You know, we tell someone to go to a concert, it's one thing. Your friend tells you to go to concerts, it's a completely, a completely different thing. I did see that the Chamber was there serving adult beverages. So come on down to the park, listen to music, have some adult beverages, buy some goodies. So yeah, I think, I think we do do a good job with, with the farmer's market. You have to understand we're a small town. We are competing with every other municipality that has a farmer's market in the valley. So if you want it to grow, be part of the solution. And then I asked at our last meeting, and I'm going to ask again, do we have any kind of update on what's actually allowed to happen at the property next to, was Mr. Brunch, I don't remember what that subdivision's son said.
Autumn Ridge.
Autumn Ridge?
Autumn Ridge.
The extent of the project they can complete right now?
They're, they have a permit to move a water line and to, and some irrigation, I think, lines or something in there. And but, and then as part of, as I understand it, as part of their connection to the highway, they had, CDOT required them to get an access permit. connection to the highway, they had, CDOT required them to get an access permit. And so they have to identify where the actual driveway will be, but they don't have, they don't have any clearance to do any connection, any roads or connections or anything in, on the property. So it's mostly, it's mostly subsurface stuff is what I'm told that their permit is for.
Permit's for, okay.
But they were required by CDOT to have, to be, to identify where their connection to the state highway was going to be.
Okay.
So are they going to leave, that sidewalk going to be out of service until, I guess, because I mean, they got it all dug out, now there's no sidewalk there. How long are people going to have no sidewalk? Because I mean, if it's way down the road, we can't leave that set all winter and all
No, you're right, they shouldn't.
For a long time, because I mean, that's a big old, they got that dug down two feet in there.
All the way to the road too, so you have to go actually on the road to get around it. Yeah, they should road a mill or something, where the path was.
Something in there because a lot of people walked it, now there's no sidewalk. So they're going to have to either walk on Highway Six or go down the other way to get to like Gopher and Come and Go and stuff, so that's my question, how long that dirt's going to be, because it's dug pretty deep.
Yeah.
I hope it's not that way till they get a permit, that'd be next spring.
Right.
I would have thought they would have just staked it, I mean, would have told them.
That would still identify where the entrance is, yeah.
Identify, would have staked it, but yeah, there's...
They're grading earth.
I mean, they got dirt dug out and everything, so it's... So there's probably, what, 75 feet of sidewalk gone.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that. I'll look into that.
It appears they're doing way more than replacing some subsurface.
Yeah, I think they're more than identifying, because it looks like they're, I mean, they've got that all, the arches, the curve, they got that all dug out, looking like they're ready to start putting driveway in.
Hey, Jeff, I'm still on.
Okay.
Do you want me to answer?
Oh, yes, Nicole, thank you.
Okay. So they are permitted through the town to move water and sewer lines, and one of the lines that they needed to connect to on Highway Six was, they were fearful because they couldn't find it, and Public Works was out there trying to help them find it. They were fearful that it was going to be farther under Highway Six. Luckily, it just abutted right to the edge of Highway Six. And so they are trying to connect to that utility there to move some of those lines, so they are working on that. They have three months for complete restoration. So it, from the time that it was permitted to a three-month mark, they have got to make sure that they are completely restored with what they did, not only with CDOT, but with the town as well, because their access is through a CDOT permit. And so CDOT has just as much skin in the game as the town does to ensure that it's restored as quickly as possible. But that is part of their, in order to plat their subdivision that they did there, that the town approved, there has to be an access point to both properties. And that's why they were told that they needed to put in an access point to that second property that's away from the house, because in order for that house to be able to be subdivided, they were told by CDOT and the county that they needed to make sure that they that they had multiple access points. So the only thing that the town approved was for them to move some of their utilities, and there are some on the south side and the north side of the property. But Joe has been out there every single day checking in and doing inspections, so it is moving along, and from my understanding, there's not additional work outside of what they needed to perm, or what they got permitted for, that's taking place, but we can definitely do an evaluation and make sure that there's not something more taking place. But they will do some sort of paved access point from Highway Six, just a little bit up past the sidewalk, so that they don't have to come back around to that, but they are not permitted to do any additional driveway outside of just that access point until they come in for a site plan review and propose what it is that they want to do there.
Okay, and I guess that's where I have a concern on that, is we don't have a site plan, and the board might not even approve that as their access point. The board could potentially ask them to access that parcel from the north side, so I don't know why they're, why we're allowing them to do all this work without a site plan.
I think it was ju, from my understanding, it was just so that they could get the approval to complete the subdivision.
So if they don't have, so if they have to do that, they're going to go through the process of putting a sidewalk back in, then tearing it back out again? I mean, they got to put that sidewalk back in sometime.
That's what it sounds like.
Yes.
So the sidewalk's got to be back in within three months of their permit date?
But, yeah, but we don't...
But the access to that property...
That's what I'm saying.
There's been no approvals by the town, so potentially they could be looking at tearing that access.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, if we don't know if that's access, if there's going to be a sidewalk, it has to be a thick, if that's going to be the entrance, the sidewalk should be, got to be designed altogether different, it can't just be a foreign slab.
Slab of asphalt, yeah.
I thought their presentation said they had to have a, they had to have access on both sides.
No.
No, it isn't, not required.
It wasn't required, no. We don't know what's required, because we haven't seen a site plan.
Because I know the neighbors are upset, and they're, because behind them.
Yeah.
And then they ended up, like, one of the meetings, the guy was like, oh, we're going to put access through there, because we have to, because CDOT.
No.
I was like, okay, this is...
No, there's a potential for two different access points to that property, so. I guess we'll, we'll have to leave it as is for now and see what potentially happens, but I would like the...
So July, August, September, so it has to be done by October.
Yeah.
So it appears they are putting an entrance in, not just identifying where it's going to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, is it okay at the board if we give staff some direction to figure out what's happening there that could potentially be outside the scope of any permit that they have at this point?
Because I mean, they're going to have to get a permit to put the sidewalk back, I mean, that's got to be all approved by CDOT or State, if it's going to be a driveway. So you're going to need some kind of a permit for that.
If CDOT approved the access point, it means that the developer had to tell them where it was going to be. Right, if CDOT said to be compliant, you've got to have this access point, and the developer must have provided them with something to get that ruling from them. We haven't seen it yet.
We haven't seen anything, so potentially, I mean, so what did CDOT go under approval of, a subdivision that's not approved?
That's my question.
Yeah.
They're building an entryway into a field.
They unloaded a whole load of rebar there today.
Yeah, I think we need to direct staff to check in.
Why would they be putting rebar there if they're not going to do some building? Because they, there was a pretty good load of rebar delivered.
So they could be building out of scope.
Or they're just storing it, I mean...
Well, they ain't just storing rebar, not the price, not right now, for three months. Because this is green, this is high, this is state highway rebar.
Oh, okay.
This is coated rebar for state.
I'd like some clarification on what CDOT has in their possession that they base their approval on, and why don't we have it?
Yeah. And then my last note is, since it is summertime, we had a great spring. Trees grew very large in most people's yards. Bushes got very large. Those are supposed to be trimmed back from the sidewalk, so. Anyone in the public that may be listening, please go out, look at your sidewalk, look at your bushes, and see if they need trimmed. We have a cool little schematic available at the town that shows a little stick figure person and what it should look like, so.
We'll put that in the next newsletter, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a process that someone from town would go or call them and say, hey, you got to trim those back to homeowner?
We have done that, sure.
Yeah. I think that's the discussion of a code enforcement officer.
Right, yeah.
Would be doing that.
We don't have that as of right now, but...
But if we have reports of it to town hall, then they would send somebody to take and notify them, versus confronting your neighbor about it?
Confronting your neighbor about it, yeah. Other than that, I got nothing else, so the next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by trustee Seifert to adjourn the meeting, seconded by trustee Brittenall. All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Just a couple minutes, ladies and gentlemen.